To keep my head up. I'm going to stop my video.
Good everyone, welcome to today's Board of Commissioner meeting for Tuesday, April the 26, 2022. Ottawa County seeks to becoming a welcome place where you belong, recognizing that we are are a county of many different faces and traditions. Our invocation today is offered from one of those perspectives. I will now ask Commissioner Turstrow to introduce today's invocation guest.
Yeah, it's Pastor Mark Boweslog from Geneson Bible Church.
All rise please.
It seems fitting before praying today to read these verses from scripture, the words of James, and he wrote these things to us. Now if any of you lacks wisdom, he should ask God, who gives to all generously and ungrudgingly, and it will be given to him. But let him ask in faith without doubting, for the doubt is like the surging sea, driven and tossed by the wind. That person should not expect to receive anything from the Lord, being double-minded and unstable in all his ways. Join me in praying this afternoon. I want to pray and ask God for you to have wisdom as you consider the matters of business that are before you. Father, we thank you that you are a loving God, that you stand ready to meet our needs and to give us what is best for us. And we pray for each commissioner today as they hear different matters and make decisions, that you would give them wisdom, that they would understand well the things that are before them, that they would be able to make decisions in a way that is honorable and respectful of all who come before them, that you would guard their hearts from any kind of thought that would lead them away from fairness and justice. And we ask that this meeting would be profitable for our county, that it would lead us forward for our good and for your glory. In the strong and powerful name of Jesus, I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and justice for all.
We call a roll please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Garcia. Mr. Powellman.
Here.
Mr. Zylestra.
Here.
Mr. Danenberg.
Here.
Mr. Meppelink.
Mr. Turpstra.
Here.
Mr. Holfler. Mr. DeYoung.
Here.
Mr. Kyers.
Here.
Mr. Berkman.
Here.
And Mr. Fenske.
Here.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Presentation of petitions and communications from your office.
None from us.
Thank you. Today we have a presentation by Talent 2025. Kevin Stotts, the president of Talent 25, and Board Member, Council Member, CEO Jim Brooks. Gentlemen, welcome. Thank you very much for joining us today.
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to come and share some thoughts with you. My name is Jim Brooks, and I'm a third generation business owner from the city of Holland. My mother's family were among the Dutch settlers who founded the community of Zealand. My great uncle Ernie was mayor of Holland when Tulip Time first started. In addition to his insurance company, he served as a state senator and ultimately became the head of Michigan Corrections. My grandfather Phillips Brooks was the founder of our family business, which he started out of the basement of his home in the backseat of his car during the Great Depression. When the Brooks family first moved to Holland, it's probable that our English roots were considered as a form of diversity for the community. Today, my immediate and extended family includes people who were born in Colombia, Russia, Korea, Vietnam, Chile, and Ethiopia. Our family reunions look like the United Nations, and we love it. In 1977, our family acquired the Squirt Soft Drink Franchise Company, which had more business in Mexico and Latin America than it did in the United States. And I, for the first time, was required to engage deeply in learning a culture that was very different than the one I grew up in, in order to learn to do business there successfully. I learned that there is much to admire about the Latin culture. Over 30 years, I spent in the beverage business. We served millions of consumers who had different ideas and preferences of what the best beverages were. And because of that, we purposefully created a diverse workforce that would help us understand that. And as a result, we were able to innovate new beverages more rapidly than our competitors and thrive as a result. Now our family's in the real estate development and property management business. We develop and manage large apartment communities. Our residents are very diverse. What they look for in the living environment and experience is not all the same. And once again, we have been very purposeful in creating a very diverse team who understands those nuances, which give us a strategic competitive advantage over our competition and has enabled us to achieve superior operating performance. In 1991, my wife and I became legal guardians for a Russian girl, the year the Soviet Union collapsed. And she became a part of our family for the four years that she attended Hope College, and then again for another two years when she got an MBA at the University of Michigan. Both she and our natural daughter have married men who were born in countries and cultures that were different than theirs. Now we all are on an incredible cultural learning journey that enriches our lives. I have been truly blessed. Over the last 20 years, I have tried to give back to community by serving as a volunteer to help bring government business and nonprofit leaders together to do regional and local community comprehensive strategic planning. Al Vanderberg, who was the former supervisor of this county, played an important role in those planning efforts. The first effort was done between the year 2000 and 2010. It was called the West Michigan Strategic Alliance, and there were over 300 men and women from business, government, and nonprofit organizations from Ottawa, Kent, Muskegon, and Alleghen Counties. Our local planning effort was launched in 2011. It's called the Holland-Zealand Model Community Initiatives, and also involves hundreds of men and women from all three sectors and from very diverse walks of life. The most important thing that I have learned over the past 20 years from this community planning work is that communities are complex. There are none of us has a complete understanding of what community is and all the way it interacts. It is only through bringing a large group of people together who look at community through different lived experiences, through different perspectives, to come together, to gather objective information, engage in civil discourse that hopefully leads to shared learning, that we have any chance of having a holistic understanding of community that enables us to make wise decisions that ultimately serve the benefit of all community stakeholders. The hundreds of participants in both of the planning initiatives of which I've been involved strongly support the statement that sustainable communities require balance between economic prosperity, environmental stewardship, and social justice. They also agree on the importance of our communities being genuinely welcoming and inclusive of all people, and that diversity, equity, and inclusion for developing, attracting, and retaining talent is a top priority for community collaboration, especially in this time of severe labor shortage. We as business owners alone cannot shape community culture. We need government and nonprofit organizations to join us in that work as well. Ottawa County understands this. You have been a leader in many best practices of government service, including your thoughtful creation of your Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, which helps the county attract and retain talent, diverse talent, that helps you better understand and serve the needs of our diverse population. On behalf of the business leaders and all the people that I've done strategic planning with, I thank you as commissioners and your staff for your leadership and the fine work that you've done in this area. I'm also a participant with Talent 2025, which emerged out of one of these strategic planning initiatives about a decade or so ago. The organization engages many Ottawa County and West Michigan employers with educators to ensure that we have the workforce that has the knowledge and skills we need to meet the needs of our changing world. I'm delighted today that we have Kevin Stotts, the president of Talent 2025, with us to share his perspectives on this important community opportunity. Thank you.
Jim, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. It's good to meet all of you, be with you here today. My name is Kevin Stotts. I'm the president of Talent 2025. I'm speaking to you today, as Jim said, as a representative of the West Michigan employer community, to support the important work that Ottawa County has undertaken in its efforts on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Talent 2025 is an alliance of CEOs from West Michigan working on today's complex talent issues. We rely on data, research, expertise, to illuminate gaps, evaluate strategies, and advocate for solutions that's going to improve the quality and scale of talent across the region, and ensure all meet the needs of employers now in the future, ensure all individuals and the entire region can thrive. As employers, we recognize that for West Michigan to be a top region for talent, our efforts have to include an intentional effort at addressing the diversity of the workforce and the needs of that population. This is why our organization invites all of our members to make up commitment on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We have 420 members today, 88 of which have made this commitment. And those 88 companies represent over 100,000 employees here in West Michigan. For them, it's a priority because it's part of their talent strategy. These are not feel-good issues, but solid business strategies by leaders responsible for the success of their companies. They know what the data says, and they know that being inclusive and welcoming of all people is good for business. These are just some of the headlines pulled from the news in West Michigan over the past year. I can cite all kinds of other headlines and research that really shows that organizations that have a more diverse workforce, have more diverse corporate boards, have a better, bigger bottom line. It just makes good business sense. In today's global economy, these emerging markets and changing customer preferences also make this an important factor. So as the word diversifies, as we become more global, the diversity of the talent in organizations really helps to tap into the emerging markets and the changing consumer preferences. It also has a lot of bottom line benefits in terms of talent within the organization, from acquisition to engagement to collaboration to creativity, productivity, profitability, and culture. There are also three reasons why this work is important. First is sort of the economic imperative. We know that if we were to eliminate the gaps in employment, education, between the majority community and minority community, and just narrow that down to the 4% it is today in West Michigan, we would add 17,000 people to the workforce, and with the resulting $741 million economic benefit to the regional economy. So these are real numbers, real people looking for opportunity. And as I said, our organization is about the employers, individuals, and the region thriving. As this slide just talks about, it's a little bit hard to see on some of the present on the monitors, but this just talks about the gap in employment between minorities in the region and in West Michigan, Ottawa County, and the majority community. We're just, and just to eliminate that gap by employers working on unconscious bias in hiring processes, being more inclusive in terms of their workplaces, valuing cultural and other forms of diversity in the workforce, we would be able to eliminate this gap and realize that economic gain I talked about. This slide really talks about sort of more of that from an income standpoint. When we have people that are not realizing the full economic opportunities that exist in West Michigan in Ottawa County, it holds them and their families back and holds the region back, as I said. This slide just talks about the wage disparities. And you can look at the top bars, Ottawa County and Michigan in terms of income in Ottawa County leads, household income by a pretty significant margin compared to the rest of the state, rest of the region. And you can, you look at some of the other subgroups of the population around Ottawa County, and the gaps in terms of household income. Related to this, I'd say that we know that household income also impacts academic performance of students. If you're poor, you're more likely to have your kids underperforming in school. And so as a result, if we can work on these numbers, it benefits not just the individuals, the households, and benefits the students in those households. Second is the changing demographics and expectations of the workforce. As younger talent enters the workforce, it's important to remember this group has grown up in a far more diverse world than previous generations. Regardless of their own identity, young talent and young talent really find that diversity, inclusion is a priority of the communities and the organizations they work with is a priority. The generation, the future of our workforce called Gen Z, which is made up of those born after 1996, is the most diverse generation ever. By the end of this decade, Gen Z will make up nearly a third of the workforce. And 47% of this group identifies as a person of color. If we're not welcoming and inclusive of this generation, we simply will be falling behind as a community and as employers in terms of attracting, retaining the future of the workforce. The generation is not only more comfortable with diversity, inclusion, they also expect abandoned. They are choosing companies and communities that embrace diversity, equity, inclusion, and everything from the workplace to housing to culture. They want leaders who are champions for diversity, who are creating communities where everyone can thrive. We need more, a more diverse and inclusive community to support employer efforts to develop, attract, and retain. The talent employers need to thrive. We must attract, develop, and promote this talent. Last is building thriving communities. Like the rest of Ottawa of the country, Ottawa County is becoming more diverse. This is good. This is good. This is good for the reasons I've explained. Yet Ottawa County and the entire region are held back when gaps persist in employment, education, and income between the majority and minority communities, as I've spoken of. It's far better to be proactive than reactive to these challenges. We can't afford to wait until they become overwhelming. And somebody as a resident of Grand Rapids and Kent County, I can speak to the difficulty when the problems become greater. So the work of the county in partnership with community organizations, in partnership with employers, really does get ahead of the problem. Poverty is also irrespective of race and ethnicity, yet we know Ottawa County residents who are minorities are more likely to be poor and have lower levels of education and/or language barriers. Investing in efforts to help these individuals reach their full potential allows a county to become, to go further. The county government, working with the business and community leaders, as I said, can make a significant impact. They can't do it alone. Employers can't do it alone. Community organizations can't do it alone, and government can't do it alone. Simply put, from our perspective, the work of the county on diversity, equity, and inclusion is just good government for all its citizens. As I shared a little bit in this slide, the county has really been a leader in employment, population growth, wages, not just in West Michigan, but across the entire state of Michigan. There's a lot to be proud of. I think that's the direct result of the innovative K-12 education strategies that are going on here in Ottawa County, the diverse global employer base that you've organized and put together, the public-private partnerships with Jim has spoken about. And so this effort on diversity, equity, and inclusion, I think, fits within the strategies and priorities of the community in Ottawa County. And so I just want to celebrate the commission for making the investment, and thank you for your time today. I'm available to ask any questions if there's time. Thank you.
Commissioners? Questions?
So what is being done right now? Because you said that there in one of the first slides, that if everybody were to be working, that would fill up 17,000 jobs right now? So what's being, like, is there anything being done? Or is it just like what?
Yeah, the biggest barrier, the biggest, the principal reason for the barriers of employment and gaps in wages is education. I don't know what the numbers are for Ottawa County, but one in eight adults in Michigan does not have a high school diploma or GED. One in 10 has less than an eighth grade education. When you have that low of a level of education, you're also not likely to be working in the, you're not likely to be in the labor force, working or seeking employment. So we're working at improving the quality of the programs that are available to adults, many of whom just struggle because they have learning challenges. They're undiagnosed. Improve the quality of the programming, make greater investments to that group, and also organize the programming so it's more accessible to individuals who have that lower level of education. We're also been working with employers on what we describe as upskilling. So that would be somebody who is employed, maybe has a high school diploma or a GED, and working with the employer to do, to learn a new skill, a new sort of employer's certification or other kind of training program that allowed that person to move up in terms of maybe their wage, maybe their occupation within the company. So sort of moving people in with by improving the level of education, especially that group that's below a high school diploma. And then once they're employed, working with the employer to make sure that they have opportunities to improve their education skills so they can stay in the workforce. So those are just two. I could talk a lot more.
Kevin, can I add one other thing that Ottawa County, I think, is also working on? And from the community planning work, again, I believe that we're in a world that's transitioning beyond the industrial age to an age of digital technologies and artificial intelligence. And the knowledge and skills that employers need, not just business employers, but government and nonprofit, is also changing. Our families who are from low-income backgrounds, who are disproportionately minority families, but not just minority families, have very limited or no access to computer technology, internet technology, and they don't develop the skills. and, and they don't develop the skills at a young age that the rest of the population does, which severely restricts their development and their ability to deliver value ultimately as they become adults. So this work that Ottawa County is doing on universal broadband is really strategically critical as well for empowering all families with the ability to access information, the ability to access learning, so that as they become working adults, that they will be able to have the knowledge and skills that we as employers need. Thanks.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you, Mr. Stotts and, uh, Mr. Jim Brooks. Appreciate it very much. It's nice to hear some encouragement that the path that our county has taken is, is, we're doing the right thing and then we're moving forward, uh, you know, for the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before our public comment, I always have some board chair comments, which I'll share with you today. April is county government month, and this honor recognizes the key contribution of county governments that make our daily life in our county successful. As our county commissioners sit here today, we all know that county governments play a vital role in the delivery of key public services. A big thanks to all the county employees and the Board of Commissioners in delivering these services and making Ottawa County the best in the state. Next is the results are in from our broadband survey, and besides revealing significant gaps in broadband access, the survey's data clearly shows service is insufficient, and there is significant demand throughout Ottawa County. Ottawa County will be releasing updates periodically as potential broadband infrastructure plans are developed embedded over the next few months, including additional analytical maps based on the merit survey data. Finally, spring brings much activity to our roads. Please be on the lookout for heavy farm equipment preparing for planting as well as multiple road construction projects. So thank you. This is our first opportunity for a public comment, so we'll start by those in the audience or that have signed up with Clerk Rokeback for public comment.
First public comment we have is Lori Grassman from Robinson Township.
Welcome, Lori.
Lori Grassman from Robinson Township. So in the past couple of months, you gentlemen have had all the fancy nonprofit desk sitters telling you how much they love the DEI. Today we get real. Ottawa County is not run by fancy desk sitters. Ottawa County is run by men and women who get their hands dirty, the farmers, the tradesmen. We don't do woke policies out there. I have stood in front of this circle as a special needs mom practically begging for help. I have stood in front of this circle as a concerned citizen when the parents' rights were writ away. Today I stand in front of this circle as a business owner, and I guess that labels me a minority business owner because labels are so great, and before you assume that I'm out there selling candles, vitamins, or making washcloths. No, I'm a business owner in the male-dominated field of trucking, a crucial sector of the American economy, and we will hire just any person that walks in the door with a heartbeat at this point. So today I stand here very concerned that our highly conservative county has locked arms with the DEI movement. Yes, it's a movement. It's an idea that produces nothing tangible, and I'm concerned that our DEI movement has locked arms with organizations like Welcoming America, Gateway for Growth, and Most Concerning the New American Economy. I promise you that Ottawa County doesn't need a new economy, and partnering with someone like Michael Bloomberg is not what Ottawa County would vote for. This circle of men represents Ottawa County in more ways than one. First, there were Rs. Behind the majority of your names, Ottawa County is and has been conservative forever. Out those doors, there is very little support for progressive ideas. Second, look around this circle. That's about as diverse as Ottawa County is. There's majority of white men. There's no women sitting on your board. There's not a multitude of race. This board, it looks exactly the way it does because that's what Ottawa County looks like. It's not a bad thing. It's what Ottawa County is. Ottawa County is the fastest-growing county for years. People have flocked here because we're already welcoming, because we have a great economy, we have great jobs, and we have great schools. It's a booming county with a small-town feel. That's what people want, not a place that demands people bow to the hierarchy of skin color. DEI will ruin this county. It's a divisive movement dripping with progressive left ideas. Name one city, county, or state that has brought DEI in and flourished. There is none. With our DEI economy partnering with the American econ, new economy, you are asking our citizens of this county to do something you won't even do. Bend over backwards for a small percentage of the population. When our state came after an immigrant restaurant owner like here last year, did you guys stand with her? She was fighting for her American dream. Did she feel like she belonged? She's here boosting our economy. Did you make her feel welcome? You didn't, because the Rs. Behind your name are fake. You have sold your conservative citizens to the highest progressive buyer. It is time for a change in Ottawa, and one big issue seems to be the woke ideas and partnerships of the circle in front of me.
Thank you, Lori.
Next public comment is Harvey Nickel from Georgetown Township.
Welcome, Harvey.
Thank you. My name is Harvey Nickel. I live in Jenison. Ottawa County has received fifty-seven million dollars in COVID relief funds and has formed a nineteen-member committee to recommend how to spend this money. When I look at the membership of the committee, I'm very concerned. The COVID lockdowns and mandates were devastating to small businesses in our county. Many were forced to close. Many people were forced into bankruptcy. Who on this committee will be a champion for these small businesses? Why is there not someone on the committee like Marlene Pavlos Hackney, who was arrested, handcuffed, and shackled like a violent criminal, and then jailed in Lansing because she would not comply with the unlawful and unconstitutional mandates that kept her rest, and kept her restaurant open? I do not see anyone who will be advocate for the small businesses that were forced to close. I see city managers, county commissioners, foundation directors who sit on each other's boards, and directors of organizations that might push progressive socialist agenda. I fear this money will not be used to restore the small businesses decimated by the lockdowns, but be used to build low-income housing shelters for LGBTQ plus youth, push diversity and equity inclusion training, set up vaccine clinics, and push the youth assessment survey, which questions eighth through twelfth graders about sex, drugs, and gender identity. I believe that people who were most negatively affected by the lockdown should be received assistance they need to reopen their businesses, and I believe the majority of the citizens of Ottawa County would agree. I also want to talk about election fraud. I've been doing some digital auditing of the qualified voter files from Wayne County, one precinct in which there were a hundred and thirteen voters over a hundred, and thirty of them voted in the, by absentee ballot in November. Of the one hundred and thirteen on the voter rolls, sixty-three are dead, according to the Social Security Death Index and databases of obituaries and grave sites. Four of the dead voted in November twenty twenty. But also, there are four people that I could not find in any database. All four were registered in September twenty twenty, and they voted absentee ballot in November of twenty twenty. I suspect there are similar problems in Ottawa County that need to be investigated. We are pairing, paying ERIC, the Election Registration Information Center, to manage the QAFs in Michigan, and obviously, they're not doing a very good job. ERIC is funded by George Soros's Open Society, and he has openly stated that his goal is to destroy America. We need to stop using ERIC and clean up our voter rolls. We need to eliminate mail-in voting. We need to get rid of all voting machines. They contain a 4G wireless card that allows them to be connected to the internet, which breaks the chain of custody of the votes. We must use paper ballots and require voter ID for all future elections. There must be a full investigation of the twenty twenty election, and the people responsible for the fraud must be held accountable. If we don't fix twenty twenty, we will lose America. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey.
That's everyone who's signed up for public comment. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Appreciate it. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of our agenda.
So moved.
Artwork. Any further discussion? Will you call a roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Zylstra?
Yes.
Mr. Turpstra?
Yes.
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
And Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next is consent resolutions. Commissioner Danenberg?
Thank you, Chairman Fenske. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent resolutions one through three.
Second. It's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will you call the roll, please?
Sir, Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Zylstra?
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Turpstra?
Yes.
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
And Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There are no public hearings under action items from Finance and Administration. Commissioner Baumann?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the Ottawa Conservation District Agreement revision, I make a motion to approve and authorize the board chairperson and clerk registered to sign an amended agreement between the county and the Ottawa Conservative Conservation District OCD for fiscal year twenty twenty-two that removes the requirement of the OCD to repay the county if the state of Michigan reinstates operational funds for districts.
Motion on the floor, and there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Turpstra?
Yes.
Mr. Zylstra?
Yes.
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
And Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Regards to the twenty twenty-two Ottawa County equalized values, I make a motion to approve and authorize the the board chairperson and clerk registered to sign the twenty twenty-two Ottawa County equalized values and to appoint the equalization director to represent Ottawa County at the state equalization hearings.
Board?
There's a motion and a second. Gentlemen, any discussion? Seeing none, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Zylstra?
Yes.
Mr. Turpstra?
Yes.
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
And Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Regarding the twenty twenty-two Ottawa County equalized values Form L forty thirty-seven C, I make a motion to approve and authorize the board chairperson and clerk registered to sign the twenty twenty-two Ottawa County equalized values Form forty thirty-seven C for each jurisdiction in the county.
Sordid.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Sir, Mr. Zylstra?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Turpstra?
Yes.
And Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Regarding the Sheriff's Office personnel request, I make a motion to approve the proposal to add one full-time benefited crisis intervention team coordinator position at the POLC three twelve eligible road patrol pay grade at an additional cost of a hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars, paid for with Bureau of Justice grant funding.
Or?
It's a motion and a support made. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Zylstra?
Yes.
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Turpstra?
Yes.
And Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Regarding the County of Ottawa financial report from Bredaveld Hepner LLC, I make a motion to receive for information the comprehensive annual financial report of the County of Ottawa for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We've got, uh, Peter Hefner here, our auditor here, just to give a brief, uh, update on the report.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name's Peter Hefner, and I represent Bredaveld Hepner, the firm of independent certified public accountants that conducted the county's audit for the current year, for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Um, I wanted to just touch upon a couple highlights. I spoke with your finance committee last week and, and we walked through a number of financial statements, but today I would just wanted to touch upon our opinions. Our opinion on the financial statement is what I would refer to as unmodified. It's that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position, results of operations, cash flows where applicable, of your governmental activities, your business-type activities, each major fund, the aggregate discreetly presented component units, as well as the aggregate remaining funds in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, uh, you are presenting financial information. Your management prepares the financial statements following the standards set out by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, is our opinion. We also had a chance to audit some federal financial assistance. Last year, you received twenty-one million dollars and expended twenty-one million dollars on various programs. We audited four major programs. As part of that audit, we provide an opinion in the back of the report about your compliance with federal requirements. That opinion, and I'm summarizing each opinion. In that opinion, we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses or non-compliance with federal grant requirements, which is what I would refer to as the desirable opinion. The last opinion that we provide is on your system of internal controls over financial reporting. Your staff prepare the financial statements. We audit. We're not coming in and performing accounting services. And our opinion on your system of internal controls over financial reporting, we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses with your system of internal controls over the preparation of this hundred-plus-page document. And so, three opinions, um, all of those would be the desirable opinion if I were in your shoes. No material weaknesses identified, no significant deficiencies, and you complied with generally accepted accounting principles. A lot of information within this document, but I, I wanted to be here to answer any questions that you may have. So if, if you have questions, I would be happy to try and address those.
Questions for Mr. Hefner?
I just have one comment, and you just brought that up, Peter, about the fact that the, um, the report is, is documented and the document is, is, uh, put together by our, our staff. And, um, I just want to, on, on, on the record, congratulate Karen and her staff. We're the tremendous job. And the appreciation for the fact that, as Peter has said, this saves the county a lot of money.
Yeah, we would have to bring substantial additional resources to put together this document because, um, you're accounting for multiple funds and multiple entities, and it's a complex preparation process. So the fact that your staff prepares the statements, it's one of two clients that we have that prepare their own financial statements. You have to bring that technical expertise to the table and the resources to put that together. So, so it, it saves you substantially in the audit, uh, cost.
I just wanted to bring that up and just, once again, thank Karen for, for the work that her staff and herself does for the county.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have that motion on the floor, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion, comments? You call the roll, please?
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. Turpstra?
Yes.
Mr. Zylstra?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
And Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget adjustment, I make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget adjustments per the attached schedule.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, no, thank you. Appreciate that. You know, I think my preference is to be able to remove items from the, um, from the budget adjustments, but, uh, you know, absent that, I'll be putting no on this. And that's, uh, because of the contract with the prosecutor's office. I totally support, you know, the prosecutor's office and their, you know, desire to make a response to the motion by the appellant, uh, U of M in this case, but, uh, you know, one hundred and forty-one thousand for an expert's report, that is far beyond what we normally pay for an expert's assistance. So, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm going to speak out. I appreciate Lee spending the money on this one. This was my neighbor that had happened on, and my wife, I reached out to Lee a couple different times. different times. We do not want this to go to trial. We don't want to live through that. We don't want to deal with any of it. And I don't think her husband, I still know him, his son is out in our area, they don't want to go through it again. So, all of you that vote for this, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have our prosecutor, Mr. Lee Fisher. If you would be so willing to give us a little insight and summary, please?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here, I was in front of the Finance Committee earlier on this issue, and I did give a brief summary of the case for those commissioners who are not on the Finance Committee. This is a case that took place in Zeeland back in 2003 where a mother started her home on fire with the intent, and it was proven at trial, to kill her daughter who was inside the home, her teenage daughter, 14 years old. She succeeded in doing so. She was brought to trial, she was convicted. She has now been through six different appeals, and all of her appeals to this date have been denied. She is on what would be basically her last ditch appeal. I don't think she would have any further appeals after this one. And she has, her case has been taken up by the U of M Innocence Project over at the U of M Law School, and they have gotten assigned basically a small army of attorneys to her appeal. At least three lawyers, some law students, some law classes are working on this, and it's almost partially a law school project, a class project in some, to some extent, but they have really unlimited resources. And we have one attorney in our office that we assigned to do our appellate work. Her name is Joelle Haas, so she is essentially on her own, of course, with help from me and others, but basically on her own, taking on the small army of attorneys from the U of M Innocence Project. And part of what they have done for this appeal, they would have to show that there's new evidence that didn't exist back in 2003. There's new science, new evidence that they could present at a new trial. So they're asking for a new trial. They're presenting two issues essentially. The first issue is that there's new fire science that would show that the fire science that was used in the original investigation was flawed. And actually, there is no new fire science we have determined, but their experts are saying that there is. And basically what they're doing is they're taking old science that existed prior to 2003 and just calling it something different now, but it's the same science that was available back in 2003 when this case was tried, was available before that, back in the 1990s. So that's one issue. They've got an expert saying there's new science. We had to hire an expert to counter that. If we don't counter it, we lose the motion for new trial, we're going to have a new trial. So we did, we've already had that expert furnish their opinion and report, and I think that expert cost us about $30,000, costing $30,000. Their second issue deals with the area of false confessions. Now, in this case, Ms. Bose, Karen Bose, the defendant, made some incriminating statement during her interviews, and they are trying to claim that she was basically coerced by police tactics to make these incriminating statements back during her interviews. They're saying there's new science regarding that as well, as far as the techniques the police use and so forth, and their experts will come in and say that. But again, it's another situation where they're trying to claim there's new science in this area, but there really isn't. It's the same thing that we were dealing with before 2003, but they're trying to call it something different. They've got their experts that could put their own spin on it. We've got to counter that. And there aren't very many people out there in the country that do this kind of work, this kind of expert work. The only ones we could find, it's a very niche market, is a place called the Wellner Group, and they're, you know, basically a group of PhDs and so forth in psychology, sociology, criminal justice. They've studied this and they will come in and my understanding is they're going to give us an opinion that says this is nothing new. There was nothing wrong with the police interrogation techniques. This is not new science or new evidence. And they're prepared to give us that report, but to do that, this group charges $700 an hour. And we can't really shop around. We can't go out and look for a bargain expert. There just isn't anybody, there is nowhere else to go. So we're kind of stuck with them. We've got their estimates, it was all provided, I believe, in the packet that you received earlier. And I know it's a lot of money. For one witness, I understand Commissioner Zylstra's concerns with that, but if we don't counter this expert, the experts from the U of M, and we don't counter their appellate brief, then we're going to end up having a new trial. And if we have a new trial in this case, first of all, there may be some question as to whether we can actually retry the case if all the witnesses are still available, if they all still testify the same way as they did before. I don't know. But if we do have a new trial, we're going to have to have these experts at trial anyway. So, and if we have a new trial, it would probably be about double the cost of what we're asking at least, because I think it was Doug Van Essen that pointed out at our Finance Committee meeting that if she's granted a new trial, there's a very good chance that she will end up having our Ottawa County Public Defender's Office representing her at that trial. And if they do, they're going to need to hire those experts on their side at county, on the county dime, and then we're going to have to hire our experts on the county dime. So you're essentially, it could be doubling the cost here. Now, I don't know if the Public Defender's Office will be handling the case. I'm just assuming that because I don't believe that she really has any resources, that she could go out and hire attorneys to represent her at trial. I don't believe the people from the Innocence Project will be representing her at trial. They do specifically appellate work. I'm not aware that they do trial work in the event they're granted a new trial. So it could be a very, very expensive proposition as well if we're in the position where we have to try this case all over again. So I understand it's a lot of money, but all I'm asking for, again, is just that you see the need here and give us the resources that we need so that we can do our jobs and avoid having to try this case all over again.
Any questions for Prosecutor Fisher?
I appreciate that, Lee. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. You call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Mr. Terpstra.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Zylstra.
No.
Mr. Kires.
Yes.
And Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Appointments for the Jury Board. Commissioner Zylstra, please.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to nominate and appoint Cynthia Davis to the Ottawa County Jury Board, represent the Republican Party, beginning immediately and ending April 30, 2023.
Representing the Democratic Party?
Republican Party. That's what I have here.
That's correct.
That is correct.
This will be different, Mike. Okay.
You misspelled your own?
Apparently so.
Actually, the sheet says one thing and the motion says another. You're right, Ken. So it's Republican?
It is Republican.
Yeah, I can confirm that.
You can confirm that, Mr. Clerk? Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. You call the roll, please.
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Mr. Zylstra.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Terpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Kires.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
And Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Discussion items is our 2022 Equalization Report, presented by Michael Gallagher. Good afternoon, Mike. How you doing?
Pretty good.
This could be pretty close to the end, huh?
This is my last time to appear before you. Excited about retiring.
All right.
Now, it's been an honor to serve you as your Equalization Director. The board's been very good with supporting the department that very few people understand, but it's done right and well. And Ottawa County is unique in that the local units and the county and the state all work together as one team to see that the property tax system is fair and equitable. On the 80, all of the counties, that's pretty unique. And our job is to be hidden in the background without people coming to you or somewhere else. If you don't hear about us, we're doing our job.
No news is good news? That's it?
Yeah. And Brian will take, will do a great job. You won't even notice much of a difference. It'll still go on that way. The only thing out of the report I wanted to point out, it's a nice report. The taxing units, the accountants, there's all information here. They use it, saves them from calling us. Just overall, taxable value went up by 7.29%. Assess 7.84, that's the biggest increase since 2002. Which sounds great, but we all know the rate of inflation went up probably higher than that, so. Next year, and again, Brian will keep you informed of that, but as of today, it looks like the rate of inflation that we use for to compute taxable value will be well in excess of the 5%. We have to cap that, so that'll be capped at 5%. After that, it's uncapping, it's a new construction. And that depends over 2022. If the market continues, if interest rates go way up and sales go down, it'll have an effect, new construction. But as far as I can tell today, it looks like for '23, you'll probably get 8%, 8.5% increase in taxable value. Which, again, if inflation is 10, at least is kind of sort of keeping up. Ottawa County has a lot of new construction, a lot of sales. The increase in market value for '23 is already in the can because it just goes through March, and that'll be similar to past years. So, other than that, like I said, there's a lot of information here. If you had questions or comments on any of it, or I can go over those. I mean, I could recite pages for a long time because I like this stuff, and I put it all together in the awesome spreadsheets.
Gentlemen, questions for Mike?
I said, thanks for your service, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Now, you do a fine job, real fine. It's always a pleasure being able to see what's happening.
Good. You know, Mike's correct. I mean, it's sort of, they're under the radar and they do a great job, and many people don't understand what they do, but just in working with Mike and Brian and the rest of the staff for almost the last four years, they do really a fantastic job and something that's very, very important to the county. So I wish you well in retirement. It will be in great hands with Brian taking over in July.
And Michael, you don't have to look at us and try to figure out if those are, if we're really awake yet or not.
I try not to talk that long. Because we could talk about spreadsheets, numbers, this number, that number, all kinds of things. Like all the industrial personal goes away next year and how that affects things, and you'll see it. But we do have a unique staff. Everybody knows what the task, the department's tasked with, they work together. They're interested in seeing it's done right and done well, which is why it's worked so well for, we don't get walk-ins. Our entire staff is completely remote at the moment and still are, and it works very well. They do come into the office in teams, and if they want to work in the office a couple of weeks, they can. But because of the culture of the office, it's worked for us quite well. That's all I had. I'll stop talking.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated. Next is our Ottawa County Human Resources Annual Report for 2021. Good afternoon, Mercy.
Good afternoon. In true 2021 style, I'll show up with a mask, so.
Is that why you were wearing the mask?
Representative of our 2021 in HR, I think. No, so unfortunately, close contacts, so I'll take it off long enough for you guys to hear me. Hopefully, I won't put Commissioner Bergman to sleep, as he just said. That would be really bad. Okay. Just need to see which way we go with this one. Thank you. So 2021 was a very interesting year for HR. I would call it a transitional year. So we did lose a few staff members, we gained a few staff members. So it's exciting times and a lot of changing times. Front page here is just some of our newer staff members in 20, our staff members that were here in 2021. And then if we move on, in 2022, we saw Tacey Casey, who handles all of our payroll, retire after 36 years with the county, both the Sheriff's Office and the HR Office, a big loss for us. She had a lot of institutional knowledge. She could probably recite something that was in a sheriff's contract from 1985 if we needed her to. So all of that knowledge was lost when we go through grievances. I think the Sheriff's Office can probably concur that a lot of times we could just call Tacey and say, what did that say and what was that arbitration about? And she could answer those questions. So we did hire Tim DeYoung to take over the role of payroll. We also, in 2022, added September Wilson. She's our new HR specialist, and she came on board as Kelly Rantz moved into an employment analyst position. I was fortunate enough that you did approve a few board meetings ago to have an Assistant HR Director again, and I'm really excited. It's a good day to say Zach is back. So Zach Van Alstel started with Ottawa County in our Clerk's Office, and he then came over and worked in the Human Resources Office while he gained his master's degree in public administration. He did leave for a period of time and went and worked with the city of Grand Haven, and we're really excited to have Zach back in our office as the Assistant HR Director. So it's also very nice because he comes back with a lot of knowledge that he had already gained while he was here before. And the fun part about all this is because he left right before COVID and came right after COVID, most people think he's just been working from home for the last two years. So we'll kind of go with it. One of the things that we faced, a lot of transition through in 2021 was because of COVID. My annual report, I have a lot of statistical data. I just want to touch on a couple of things and then save time for any question at the end. We did process almost 300 COVID leaves during 2021. We did cover short-term disability time, COVID sick time, so we were having employees coming, going, trying to figure out what that transition looked like for departments, if people, if we could send people home and have them work from home while they were in quarantine. So our benefits team was very active during that period of time, just working on leaves. On top of that, we got the information that we would quickly, in about two weeks' time, need everybody's vaccination cards. So we were prepared to do that because we didn't want to get any OSHA violations. And then, once our team got it up and going, it got shut down again. So very transitional. So we learned what we can do and some of the things that we learned that we could do, we didn't need to use. Moving kind of from COVID, we went right into the Great Resignation, which was also just another fun time for human resources professionals in general. Like most employers, we faced a busy year in hiring. We had over 240 job postings. We had over 4,000 applicants, but we were down about 2 to 3,000, roughly over the last course, the last two years, down about 3,000 applicants when we look at our applicant pool. So a lot less applicants, a lot more jobs. So we did quite a few interviews. And at the same time that we do this, a lot of times when we do post a position, we do get internal applicants, and then we move an employee up, and then we end up with another position. So our team processed over 954 hire slips of just moving people finances around on employees. As we looked at, as we looked at the Great Recession, and we also took a good look at what we, Ottawa County, what our employees were saying. So we did do exit interviews with our employees as they were leaving so that we could have a good handle on what we can do to continue to retain and attract employees. Most of the people that were leaving, we had essentially two categories. The essential, one category was about 50% say they were leaving for promotional opportunities. And then the other, other section of that was, we had quite a few retirees in 2021. I think a lot of people were understanding what worth-life balance looked like, and so retirement maybe came a little bit sooner for people than they anticipated. One of the things that we did in two thousand and twenty-one was a partnership with the sheriff's office. Obviously, recruiting for the sheriff's office is very difficult. And so we really tried to think outside the box and come up with different ideas that we can do recruiting for their office. And to help them. So one of the things that we entered in a partnership with them on was doing a non-sworn recruits that we sent through the police academy. I think the sheriff will probably have this in his annual report in a couple of weeks, too. But we've already had six people go through our recruits. We have two currently in recruit school and we have four that have already completed recruit school. And for the last few years, we've been really struggling to get paramedics and we are, I believe, completely full on paramedics right now. Which we haven't seen in quite a while. On top of that, we do have a catet-sponsored reimbursement program. And the other thing that we did in two thousand and twenty-one was we began hiring. Retirees to come back and do background checks. And that was allowed the opportunity to free up some time for the detectives that were running those background checks. And so far, we've had four different retirees hired back to do those, so just a great partnership and also helps with. Filling positions over there.
Are she is is two enough going to keep up with the retirement? Or we have to look for more than that?
No, we need more than that. So but there's probably going to be a position request coming for a few more, I bet. Which I'd be very supportive of. Yes, so, but it is working, so that is help, it it is helpful to see because there was a period of time where we weren't sure how we were going to find paramedics. And so that's what we started with, and now we have transitioned to overall recruits, too. In two thousand and twenty-one, despite what was going on with COVID, it's a great, great resignation. We also decided it would be a great time to change our payroll system. So we also transitioned to a new payroll system right at the end of the year. Took a little bit longer than we thought. But we made it through that, too, especially changing over the group of people working in payroll. We also completed the wage study in two thousand and twenty-one. We worked with Mark Notley of Municipal Consulting Services. One of the things that was a huge takeaway was we were able to implement the universal wage scale for all groups except for our three-twelve sheriff's department group. And essentially, what we were able to do is put everybody on the same scale that had the same amount of increases across the board. And steps in levels. So it was quite an endeavor for our team. Because we did have to look at where everybody was placed at, because we, when we did it, we looked at what would afford every employee. Except for redlined employees increase, so it was anything a penny or higher. So we had to figure out what step they would go on and then when they would receive their next raise. So our team took that on at the same time as a new payroll system. So just a lot of different transition took place in two thousand and twenty-one with that wage study, too. Just some benefits, just statistics, just some really important things to focus in on. Currently, we're at ninety-seven percent of our employees are on high deductible health plan. With an HSA, that is the least expensive plan for the county and for the employees. And it has been able to help us keep our rates down from year to year. Which also helps the budget and helps to attract and retain employees. On top of that, we did have, in two thousand and twenty, we did not do the health management plan. Because most people were working from home. So that year, it was an optional plan, so we got back on track in two thousand and twenty-one of doing the health management plan. And ninety-six percent of our employees were compliant with that plan. Again, that also helps with the savings for the county and the employees. One of the things that I felt we just briefly talked about is, we're really looking at the three-pronged approach to improving services and decreasing costs. So it, just looking at our priority health rates, over the course of the last five years, we averaged a point four percent increase. We had three years where we had zero percent increases the last three years. And before that, it was roughly one percent, again unheard of, but that is. Because of a lot of work by the county and the employees to keep those low.
I'm sorry, one slide before this. I just have a quick question on the the work comp injuries and the OSHA injuries. Where were those?
Uh, they're kind of all over the board, because with all the departments that we have. We would have, some, some examples would be sheriff's department, maybe training injuries that came along with training. Dog bites, needle sticks, just a vast array of different things that take place.
They weren't all an equalization, were they?
I think, I, I mean, I'd have to double-check, but I would think that we wouldn't have a single one over there.
That's right. That's when Mike is retiring.
But majority of those are coming from the sheriff's department, then?
I believe in two thousand and twenty-one, without going back and looking at each of them, I think there's quite a few that came out of the sheriff's department that were training. Some of it's just size. They have the largest department, too, so.
I just looked at that and I thought that was pretty interesting.
Yes, some of them can be pretty interesting. We kind of joke that Erin, Erin is the queen of workplace injuries. And whenever she get, goes away, there's some random workplace injury that you can never dream up that takes place while she's gone, so. So, going back to this, just some statistical things. Pine Rest is another area where we're really decreasing costs and I think we're helping our employees. When we signed on with Pine Rest a few years ago. We were averaging about thirty-six visits a year from our employees. And in two thousand and twenty-one, we were still trending really high, just like two thousand and twenty, but we had over two hundred and fifteen visits. And this is five EAP sessions automatically. Anytime it, something comes up in your life where you need to talk to somebody, employees can use this service. On top of that, in two thousand and twenty-one, we did team up with Pine Rest. And started a new program. It's called Psychological Body Armor. And we do that with all the new employees in the sheriff's office to prepare them for. Understanding what they're going to see and how to deal with it and that we have the resources available to help them along the way. On top of that, we also do have crisis critical incident responses. Where Bob Vianipole of Pine Rest does work with our sheriff's office, our juvenile detention, if something were a critical incident. They step right in and help us out. Again, that gives back to the employees and it gives back to the county. In two thousand and twenty-one, we also, prior to two thousand and twenty-one, we had partnered with Robertson Brain Health for the sheriff's department. In two thousand and twenty-one, we did three new groups. And we did the public health team, the CMH team and the juvenile team. And overall, if we look at some of the statistical data, Doc Robertson. We can see a lifetime savings of over sixty-four thousand dollars in employee and medical claims. If they participate with this program. So it is a program that we're continuing to roll out to other departments. I think COVID slowed us down a little bit. But all of these things are just creating a more well-balanced benefit plan and option for our employees. Statistical data on our empower retirement, we offered some new programs with that. The average participant that has our power, empower retirement, their balance is over seventy-six thousand. Talent development, our talent development team in two thousand and twenty really went. Went online with talent development. We really looked at how can we train our employees while they were working from home. So we really had a hybrid program in two thousand and twenty-one where we were still doing quite a bit of that training online. And we also were able to start back up some of the programs like our Emerging Leaders Program. In addition, we've added, we do, we do the teaching of the crucial conversations and we added a crucial accountability class. And that's all for supervisors. We completed the Employee Engagement Survey at the end of two thousand and twenty-one. More results will be coming on that. We're just starting to dissect the information and how we can move forward with that information. And then just some employee relations statistics. One of the big things that I think probably is near and dear to some of you is the Service Awards Banquet. We are very hopeful, after two years of not having a Service Award banquet, we're hoping in two thousand and twenty-two, we can do a catch-up. Catch up the last two groups and get the next group in. As we move forward, and we did. Our payroll team has really been tirelessly at work. They got the two percent increases to all the employees. Those hit paychecks last week and the week before that, the loyalty payments went out. Overall, our team has been very diverse in jumping in to help each other out. Anything from our benefits team, jumping into all the COVID issues, but just a huge thank you to our payroll team. They've had a lot of changes and Dave, the supervisor over there. Has been making sure all of it runs like a well-oiled, smooth machine and it's just, it's gone really well to hopefully give back to our employees, so. That's everything. What questions do you have for me?
It's Marcy, one of your screens here who talks about it says employment. It says that fifty-seven percent of the people that left felt disrespected. Can you elaborate on that? I mean, is it, is it one particular area that is respected on? Is it something that we can together learn and grow? Make sure that doesn't happen?
That, that was overall, so those were just, that was just information from. Overall statistical census data. That's not Ottawa County. So Ottawa County, we were at about fifty-fifty. Obviously, there's some people that leave for other reasons, but we did have about fifty percent of our employees left. For promotional opportunities to go on to.
You were referring to a national study?
Yes, national, correct. They did say, there was another national study, I said, I saw that they said sixty percent of the workforce is reconsidering if they want to stay in their current job. Or look for another job, so that's what we're competing with right now. We're in a time where we schedule five interviews. We may not have three people show up. To the, they might sign up for the interview but not show up for the interview. So it's, it's, our hiring team has been going strong.
On that same theme, we talked about a couple of months ago, what, what are openings right now? What does that trend line look like? Is that looking better or?
It's trending better. We ended the year and we were, around January, I think we were at about seventy openings. We're trending around thirty-eight, forty-ish right now, which is still higher than we're used to. Some of that, I think, is the loyalty payment. Loyalty payment was approved, I believe, in February and paid out in, or end of February. And was paid out at the end of April, so we didn't see much movement for a period of time, I think. Also, the two percent increase, so we will be looking at the data as it comes in to try and. Figure out what it is we need to do next. I think one of the biggest things is getting. Getting back in the classroom and training management. And getting the groups back together of what we can do to make sure employees are happy in the job that they are in. And succession planning for the future. We have a lot of people that are still slated or on track for retirement. And how do we prepare our employees for that?
Retention is what we're trying to capture here, because I know that our sheriff's department, that's. So important for them to be able to retain their, their deputies just based on, you know, all the training and everything that has to go. Before you get something out on the road, to lose them to another department or something like that really hurts, so.
Right.
And then one more, Marcy, just like, I guess the biggest opening right now, John's old position. John, you still have deputy county administrator? Someone's got to work on it.
Supply chain.
I know. How, how we doing on that?
We're just getting started on that, so, yep. We'll, we'll be getting that position posted soon.
Three or four months out, or?
I don't think it'll take us that long.
Okay.
Let's go first. I'm thinking, what do you say, John?
John is saying three weeks.
Try to.
We, we're, we're just finalizing, we're just doing final revisions to the job posting and I will get that issue soon.
The clocks need help.
All right. I just want to express my thanks to Marcy for the help that she gave to Al, Matt and I. In coming up with this guy here as our new administrator. It was a, not a real long process, but it was a, a lot of meetings and. You were very helpful that, through that process, so thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure's all mine.
Marcy, I know there's, and you probably don't know it right now, but every time an employee quits. For whatever reason, okay, it's going to cost the county money, am I correct on that?
Quite a bit of money.
In, in every position is a little bit different than how much it's going to cost us, right?
Good examples, like, like Matt said, if we lose a deputy, we're talking six months that they're training with another deputy. Whereas maybe something, maybe in an entry-level position is maybe a couple of weeks of training. But you also have the backfill of the people that are doing the job and the transition and that knowledge that's lost when they go away. We, when we ran numbers, and I think it's probably a little low, I think an average, and again, sheriff's department aside, just because. It's, it looks different, you're roughly twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a loss of employee. Just on even the time it takes to recruit, the recruiting methods, having supervisors. In doing the hiring process, however many rounds of hiring it takes. So backfilling everybody in a department coming together to try and fill that opening.
Thank you.
Do all of our positions at the county require like a GED or at least a high school diploma?
Not necessarily. Typically, there, most of them start out at the GED level.
Because, because going back to the presentation earlier, if there was some of those positions that we could open it up. To help out that, those lower income or, you know, get those people in the positions, I think that'd be a good idea.
And see until they, they did the presentation today, we are also using Higher Reach. It's a pilot program that came out of two thousand and twenty-five. Where. Our HR team is doing a lot of the front work of trying to find candidates. And we did have to do a slight pause just because when we had seventy positions, and we were also down in employment analyst. So that, that pilot program, we started the pilot program and then we went into, then we went into COVID. Where we were kind of all locked down, people weren't doing much hiring for a period of time. So the pilot program's going to go a little bit longer, just because of some of those anomalies.
Any other questions from Marcy?
Just a, just a comment, I mean, obviously, she, she touched upon COVID and that probably had one of the largest impacts on. On her department with people resigning, retiring, hiring. Seemed like constantly changing COVID regulations and having to respond to that. They decided to implement a new payroll system during all of this, so that made it a lot more challenging. So I just want to thank Marcy and her staff. They've been very helpful, at least to me during this transition and it really. Stepped up to the plate during some really challenging times, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the report.
Thank you.
Next, the report from the county administrator, and I think you're going to go over our strategic business plan for the second quarter also, is that correct?
Yep, just, just a few updates on, on Matt and I'll just touch on a couple of highlights here. One, in terms of the first goal and, and maintaining or improving our bond credit ratings, we're going to be issuing thirty million dollars in bonds. For the Family Justice Center and we're, we're confident that. We're waiting for confirmation, but we're pretty confident that we'll maintain our triple-A. Credit rating for that.
John, just, just a basic question, how many counties, if you're aware of, have a triple-A bond rating such as ours? I mean, is, that isn't something across the board that every county just gets to have.
I, I don't know the exact number, but I, I, I would gather it's probably in the single digits because it's very difficult to get that type of credit rating.
And what, what does a county have to do to maintain something like that?
You know, obviously, you know, they look at the level of debt we have, obviously, do we pay it on time? Do we have sufficient general fund, fund balances? Those type of things that they look at. They look at population, they look at growth. They look at, you know, demographics in terms of medium income and so forth, so. But it's a, a lot of that and it gets back to. Especially the employees here and fiscal services do a lot of hard work to make sure that we maintain that. And what that means, too, is then we, when we do issue debts, you know, we are able to take advantage of some of the lowest interest rates. So we pay some of the, you know, least amount of interest that, that a county with a lower bond rating would pay. When you're talking millions of dollars and, and issuing bonds, that's, that's a pretty significant number, so. The other thing is, and, and related to what Marcy was talking about. We're still having in, in CMH, there's still a shortage of direct care workers, especially from the contractual providers, so that's been a real. It's still been a real struggle. I know that they've raised some of the hourly rates for that, which has helped a little bit. And there's been some, again, reflecting what Marcy just said, there's been some relief in attracting some new staff at CMH. They've been one department that's, that's been very busy in terms of hiring staff. And you just saw today, we're looking at. Expanding the Crisis Intervention Team to allow CMH and the Sheriff's Office to partner together on, on mental health calls. So I think that that's, that's a real positive development there. Um, we've had two hundred and eight, in the last quarter, two hundred and eighty-nine, uh, electronic communications that were delivered by GovDelivery. So those could be press releases, uh, updates on, on COVID and other matters, email communications to residents, uh, that type of thing. And as you're all aware, uh, we mailed, uh, earlier this, or in the second quarter, uh, the first edition of the newsletter, uh, that has been very well received from, uh, residents, uh, that we've heard, I think that you've heard as well. And, uh, we're working on the, the second, uh, edition of the newsletter, uh, that should be going out in the next six weeks or so, something along those lines. That's, those are the, uh, those are the major updates, uh, from that. Just a couple of other things, uh, while I have you. Uh, again, uh, as a reminder, uh, the groundbreaking ceremony for the Family Justice Center is Thursday, June ninth. And we're looking at ten A M. for that. So Thursday, June ninth, the ten A M. Uh, a whole team of people are working on the details of that. And, um, we'll get that information out to you as that becomes available. And, uh, we expect to probably finalize by tomorrow, maybe Thursday at the latest, uh, the agenda for the legislative forum with the local units. Again, that's scheduled for Friday, May sixth from, uh, starting at eight o'clock in the morning in the main conference room. Uh, just mentioned earlier, uh, we're putting the finishing touches on the job posting for the deputy county administrator position. And, and again, uh, the newsletter will be going out in the next six weeks or so. So that's what I have for you.
Thank you. General information, comments, meetings attended?
Um, tomorrow night at the Port Sheldon County Hall from four to five o'clock. Coming in open house for Howard Baumann. And many of you guys know Howard, okay, he's, um, retiring. So if you get a chance to show up, um, Howard's a retirement tomorrow night, um, I, I, I trust you would appreciate, four to, four to five is the time I have.
When's the next, uh, committee meeting?
Certainly to see if I can find that.
You can just let me know afterwards.
Okay. Yep. I'll let you know. It's, uh, right now we, we, uh, schedule them once a month. So it, it, the next one would be sometime in, uh, May.
Time in May.
Uh, I've got it right now scheduled for Thursday, May eleventh, Thursday, May twelfth at three o'clock.
Yep, there it is.
Yep.
Anything else, gentlemen, for meetings or comments? Seeing then we'll go to, um, our second opportunity for, uh, public comment. Uh, those in the audience that would like to speak, please give your, your name, uh, omit your comments to three minutes and your address. Okay. Anyone on, uh, Zoom?
I have one public comment on Zoom, Mr. Chair. Mr. Holtflor had raised his hand, but he lowered it. Mr. Holtflor, can you, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? No?
Maybe, maybe not.
Okay.
That is the only.
Okay.
The only public comment we had on Zoom, Mr. Chair.
All right. Well, thank you. Uh, well, folks, thank you for, uh, for joining us this afternoon and we'll stay in adjourned.